Good evening. This is to advise the general public that in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Lilac Harbor Board of Education meeting was advertised in the Atbury Park Press, Atlantic City Press, and posted at the Office of the Board of Education located at 307 Rock Con Road, Lilac Harbor, New Jersey, and posted at the Office of the Municipal Department of Lilac Harbor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sacone?
Here.
Mr. Filicello?
Here.
Ms. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. LaShaga?
Dr. Schneider?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Irber?
Here. May we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? The Church of Angels, the United States of America, in the name of our Lord Jesus and His Son, and His Holy Spirit. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approval. Approve the minutes. Second. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment number one. Agenda items only. The Board of Education now welcomes the public to comment on the items which are on our agenda tonight. It may not always be possible or appropriate for the Board to directly answer questions during the public comment period. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes to make their statement. No one may speak more than once on the same topic. You're required to give your name and address before speaking. Please keep your comments respectful and non-defamatory and maintain the level of decorum appropriate for a public meeting where minors may be in the audience. Would anyone like to speak? You know one of this time? Oh, okay, someone's come up.
I do have a question.
Can you approach the microphone, please?
When are we permitted to speak on the plate?
Second.
Second. Okay, so, I apologize.
Perfect. Correspondence informational items. Any comments or questions? We'll move on to committee reports. The board president update. I'll speak to this later, but I did go to the workshop training, as did two other board members, superintendent and Carl, and we can report on that later or now if you'd like. I attended four sessions, only two days. I wish I could have attended more, but it was very helpful, excellent training and knowledge to bring back to the board. I can speak to that a little bit later. As far as my committee, the policy committee, we reviewed 12 policies. They're on for first reading, and we've been keeping up with the recommended updates. Minor changes, but some mandated and some just revisions. So you have a month to review that before you accept them next month. And finance committee, would you like to report, Christine?
We had just reviewed some bills list questions from a board member, and we did have our audit update, and I believe our auditor should be in the next couple of months coming to present our update on our audit. And we were updated that our eight, we finally have our eight mini buses on property, and we discussed aid and loo payments in an effort to get those parents their funds at the end of the school year in a timely manner. And that's about all I have for that. Thank you.
And curriculum committee met also, I mean, I'm sorry, personnel committee?
Yep. Personnel committee met. We met, let's see, last Friday morning. Had quite a bit of items on our agenda, so myself, Christine, Greg, Dr. Antunes, Carl, and Jackie were all present. Discussed some Rubens matters that the district has, asked questions one over those, also talked about current vacancies that we currently have with some staffing positions. We talked about observations and co-observations and the process for the district and administrators. We talked about some stipend questions that we had and also got an update on the NJ CUSAC scores and self-assessment. Discussed tenure celebrations. Talked about some different really cool wellness activities that's happening with the staff just around self-care and a step challenge, which is neat, keeping everybody active in the winter. Talked about the superintendent and her visits to schools coming up. So really nice meet and greets available with the staff. And then the last thing we talked about was this awesome personnel newsletter that was just fabulous. So just highlighting some marriages that we've had. Congratulations to some of those staff members who've recently got married. So really nice to see that newsletter. I think it's a nice touch to really bring out the personal touch to our staff and our administration. So that's it from personnel.
Thank you. Thanks for pushing that agenda out to the rest of the board.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up is the 2026 meeting draft dates. Does everyone have a chance to look at those?
Can I just ask, is there a reason that we're choosing to do everything in, on the first reorg meeting rather than having a separate meeting in January?
Just to save a meeting. Combine the two.
It's not before.
I don't know if we did it last year.
No, we haven't now. It's just that it's, you know, if our meeting is that Tuesday, the week prior is a week off from school, so I'm just wondering when we would receive an agenda. And then also too, our new board member, I don't know if she would have access to the full agenda, being that she's not sworn in yet.
Unstated, right?
And even for Chris and I, I don't know what that means for us because we would have to be, if we were sworn in. if we were sworn in.
We would be sworn in prior to, if you have the access to the agenda is the question.
New board members do not obtain access until then, so even when we have the reorg meeting, they don't have access before they're actually appointed.
So I think it's given a second minute.
Didn't have it last year. When he was appointed that night, he didn't either voted, either voted or abstained.
Right. But we had two separate meetings last year, I believe. We did.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think that we should keep that, especially for any board members not going to have access. Anybody else feel the same way?
I'm not so sure we can decide this tonight, Greg and Miss Amy.
Again, whenever it's approved on at reorg, because the Board still does approvals at the organization meeting, that night, the new board members do not have access, even for those things that occur at that board meeting.
Right, but normally they're minimal.
There's a lot of, all the professional services, all that kind of stuff gets approved. That and curriculum, all that kind of stuff.
That's fine, but I mean, things that they may need to research or ask questions on. Anybody else?
So is the January meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday? Because I would prefer we do the reorg meeting on the Wednesday. Does anybody have any issues with that?
Presentations, is Miss Andrea, I don't want to say her name wrong. Here with the High American Heart Association. She's come because we have an outstanding fundraiser in our district. Miss Molly, do you have a microphone there?
Can you hear me? Oh, yes. Thank you so much for having me. So good evening. Thank you again for having me. My name is Andrea Marusak with the American Heart Association. For the past 15 years, I've had the privilege of partnering with your school community through the Kids' Heart Challenge, which is held each February in your elementary schools. Tonight, I'm here to celebrate the incredible impact your district has made through this service learning initiative and to recognize the dedicated physical education teachers and inspiring heart heroes that make it possible. I just want to go through some of the numbers because they're truly speak volumes of your impact. We had 560 students and their families that were engaged with the program. They embraced our educational resources and initiatives that promoted physical and mental wellbeing. 185 students and families completed FINN's mission, which is our online module that taught them life-saving skills like how to perform hands-only CPR, recognize the warning signs of stroke, and empowered them to act quickly in case they're ever in a situation where they need to, if there's ever an emergency. Through their fundraising efforts, we had 560 families that potentially saved 1,062 lives, which is truly remarkable. Not only did your participation help save lives through your schools, but your schools also earned over $5,000, and it was $5,500 in give-backs to support and enhance your physical education programs. George Mitchell School was ranked number six in Ocean County and number two in New Jersey, and Frog Pond Elementary ranked number three in Ocean County and number nine in the state of New Jersey out of 954 participating schools. So congratulations and thank you so much. These accomplishments are the direct result of the passion and leadership of our outstanding educators and administrators. These PE teachers have made the Kids' Heart Challenge a beloved tradition, one that students eagerly anticipate each year. Their dedication is shaping not only healthier bodies, but stronger hearts and minds. I would like to recognize from George Mitchell School Tracy Williams-Moyer, Tommy Clifford, and of course, their leader, Mrs. Cummings. From Frog Pond School, I would like to recognize Amy English, Tim Velay, Alejandro Martinez, Mr. Denning, even though he's not here, he is instrumental in the success of that program, and of course, Mr. Nazaroff. Last but not least, I want to thank and extend a heartfelt thank you to our second grader from George Mitchell School, survivor Molly Modis and her family. Molly has served as our local youth heart ambassador for the past two years. She is one of over 40,000 babies that are born each year with a congenital heart defect. Molly had her first heart surgery at just 36 hours of after birth, and she's doing amazing today. So I just wanted to thank them for sharing her courageous journey. She gave her peers a personal connection to the cause, showing them the real impact of their efforts and reinforced values like kindness, responsibility, safety, and empathy. These are not just lessons for today. They are life skills that your students will carry with them forever. Thank you for your continued participation and your partnership and commitment to the health and wellbeing of your students, your community, your teachers. Together, we are making a difference, one heartbeat at a time. So at this point, I'd like to call up just representative from here from Frog Pond today is Amy English to receive her top school award. I'd also like to call up Tracy Williams-Moyer and Mrs. Cummings. I know they're both here today as well. Thank you. Great job. And of course, let's call up our heart hero Molly Modis, who's here from Molly's dad.
Good job, Molly. Maybe you want to say something?
On behalf of the Physical Education Department, it is an honor to receive this recognition tonight from the American Heart Association. Our partnership with the AHA and the Kids' Heart Challenge has been incredibly meaningful, not just for us as educators, but for our students, families, and community. I've been in the Little, I've been in the Little Lake Harbor School District for 27 years, and one of the things I'm most proud of is our longstanding commitment to heart health education. In fact, if you walk down the hall, you'll find a plaque by the gym that goes all the way back to 1980, when Jumper for Heart first launched. Our district has been involved with the American Heart Association since then. More than four decades of consistency, caring, and community involvement. We are proud to carry on that legacy. Over the last 15 years, our PE department has nourished and cultivated this program into the impactful initiative that it is today. Because of that dedication and group, our department received over $5,500 in equipment and vouchers in funds just last year alone. Resources that go directly back into our program and directly benefit our students. It is a powerful reminder that when we invest in our kids, everyone wins. Through the Kids' Heart Challenge, our students learn skills that are truly matter, CPR, how to use an AED, and how to take care of their own heart health. They learn what it means to make a difference. Many of our students participate because they know someone in their own family who has faced heart issues. They understand, even at a young age, that their actions can help others. This work is deeply personal for me. Just a year ago, my dad went through open heart surgery. And three weeks ago, I learned that myself had what my cardiologist calls a really large ascending aortic aneurysm. So when I say that our partnership with the American Heart Association is near and dear to my heart, I truly mean it. Thank you for supporting our students, our school, and his philanthropic mission. We look forward to continuing this partnership for many more years to come.
Thank you to all the families who raised funds as well. Okay, next up is Students of the Month. Our George J. Mitchell, first she was starting, Mrs. Cummings.
Good evening. The character trait for the month of October at the Mitchell School was respect. I'd like to call up our kindergarten student, Colin Lado from Mrs. Sato's class. Mrs. Sato said, Colin has had an amazing start to kindergarten. He is always set in a positive example for others, helping others, and always has a smile on. Colin shows respect to his teachers and peers daily, and is a true shining star in our classroom. I am so proud of him. Next, in first grade, we have Olivia Chuteroni from Mrs. Maloney's class. Mrs. Maloney said, Olivia is the kind of first grader who always shows respect to her teachers and classmates without being asked. She listens carefully, follows directions, and uses polite words in every situation. Olivia treats everyone with kindness and makes sure others feel included. Her respectful attitude is a wonderful example for her classmates and helps make our classroom a positive and welcoming place to learn. Olivia is a gem, and I couldn't imagine our class without her. We have another first grader, Bo Bradley from Mrs. Chamberlain's class. Mrs. Chamberlain said, Bo is always respectful and shows respect each and every day. He treats his peers and teachers with respect daily. Bo is super sweet and always looks to help his peers. Bo comes to school each and every day with a smile on his face, ready to learn and be the best ask for he can. And our second grade student of the month is Leila Coverly from Mrs. Gilly's class. Mrs. Gilly said, Leila Coverly is a shining example of what it means to show respect each and every day. She treats her teachers and classmates with kindness, listens carefully, and always uses her best manners. Leila goes out of her way to help others and make sure everyone feels included. She leads quietly through her actions and her gentle encouragement of others. Our classroom is a better place because of her positive attitude and the respect she shows to everyone around her.
Good evening, everyone. We are ready now for the Frog Pond October Students of the Month. We are going to start in third grade from Mrs. Wenzel's room, Piper Griffin. Mrs. Wenzel says that Piper is a wonderful example of what it means to be the student of the month. She is a friend to everyone and brightens each day with her positive attitude and incredible artistic talent. Her artwork always starts my day with a smile. Go over pictures. She says Jess, Piper is a true role model who consistently strives to do her best, and she is an absolute joy to have in class. In fourth grade from Mrs. Man's room, Angel Rivera. It is Angel here. I'm walking down. This teacher says that Angel is a great addition to our class. He sets the example for the others by following the rules and all directions given. He is a great helper for other students, and he has shown how kind and compassionate he can be. And as an example, the teacher brings up that if he sees somebody upset, he's the first person in that class to go over and try to work out the problem and bring peace to whatever is happening. What a great way to be. From fourth grade as well, Mrs. Palumbo's classroom, Jasmine Patrol. From fourth grade as well, Mrs. Palumbo's classroom, Jasmine Patrol. Mrs. Palumbo says that Jasmine is the perfect student. I'm not sure we can get a better compliment than that. She is motivated, always focused, and ready to learn. Jasmine settles for nothing less than her absolute best, and this shows in everything she does. She's an outstanding classmate who is always ready to help her peers better understand something. She's a great helper to me as the teacher. She's mature and wise beyond her years. I am so pleased that she has placed in my classroom this year. Congratulations. Moving on to fifth grade, in Mr. Ricardi's class, Juliana Farias. It is Juliana of the Month. For us, what we're going to learn about her. Juliana is a model student for every one in our class, says Mr. Ricardi. She works hard, always follows directions, and is always so pleasant when she comes into the room every day. Juliana always goes that extra mile to ensure that she gets her work done. She helps around the classroom and is one of the most reliable students I've ever had the opportunity to teach. Mr. Ricardi says that he can't wait to watch Juliana grow this year and continue to be a superstar in the classroom. So one more round of applause for that student. And grade six, an A U partnership. So this is from Mrs. Leterio and Mrs. Arnold, Teresa Buriella of Teresa's class. Teresa and I have been spending a lot of time together getting ready for our seminar tomorrow. She may be sitting. Teresa has been selected as our grade six Student of the Month for demonstrating outstanding academic effort, leadership, and character. She consistently approaches those studies with dedication and curiosity. And I can speak to that because as we've been preparing for our mentorship today, suddenly she's asked some outstanding questions that have helped us get a little more insight, seen that firsthand. She sets a strong example for her peers. She has a respectful attitude. She's kind to others, and she's willing to contribute to our classroom community in so many different ways. We are very proud that she's representing grade six for Mrs. Arnold and Mrs. Leterio's classes for the Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations to all those students. Show them respect. Next, we're going to call up Mr. Kover for the pickup and drop off survey results.
All right. So the superintendent and I went out to both locations at both George Mitchell and Frog Pond to hand out slips of paper with all the information and a QR code, like we did back in 2018 when the buildings were open. If we put K to second back on, one bus, three to six, I think we would see a bigger transportation use for our buses, and it would definitely eliminate not all, but I think a big portion of the parent drop off and pickup.
Now, is that part of the transportation plan that you presented?
Yeah. Our ultimate goal is to go back to what worked for the district forever, and that's K to second, one, three to six, one to go.
And the timeline for that reopening is for next year?
September.
Excellent.
Is there any plan for like parents? I guess in the afternoon it would be the best. What school would be the earliest? Just because in case some sixth graders might be helping second graders off the bus.
So when we do this, correctly, whatever goes to plan, Frog Pond will start first. That way, the older kids are at home for the older citizens.
I also learned something that's, some people just pick up in the afternoon, and they utilize the bus in the morning. So it's good to know.
Well, I think sometimes you can be at the end of the route in the morning, but if you're in the end of the route in the afternoon, you're on the bus the longest. So if you're the last one to pick up in the morning, you go scoot off right to school, so it's not as big of a deal.
And if you just operate, you're going to cut off roughly 20 minutes or half the everyday runs, because they won't be sitting at another school waiting for the second school to board the bus. So we'll definitely see an increase in drive time.
So finally, something's being done.
Yeah, me too. I won't be on the board at that time, but I'll be excited as a parent to see that come to fruition. I mean, just speaking from my own personal situation, my son lives a mile away, and is on the bus for 35 minutes because he has to go past Frog Pond to George Shae first and then back to Frog Pond. So I think it's going to work out really well to have separate fleets for each school.
Anybody else want common question? Mr. Kover?
Sounds good to me. Yeah, it sounds like a good one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to action items. Recommend the motion to approve finance items A through F. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Same one, roll call please.
Mr. Chacon? Yes. Mr. Filicello? Yes. Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, facilities. Recommend the motion to approve facilities item A. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Are there any questions? Question to answer on this one? Yes. May I have a roll call please?
Mrs. Chacon?
Yes.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, recommend the motion to approve school business administrators' non-personnel items A through E. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? A through E. Same one? Roll call please.
Mr. Chacon?
Yes.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Recommend the motion to approve personnel items H through G. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
Just again, with, I did not receive yet an answer about the part-time bus drivers, like the hours, like how many hours that will be in. How does that going to be handled? Because they have to start the beginning of the day and the end of the day, and I don't understand how they're going to have time in the middle of the day. I'm still trying to figure that out.
There will be a schedule made up on a daily basis, and any downtime drivers will have different, based on the routes that they're driving, different hours in the bus driving. So the drivers that have extra downtime will be helping us out in the district with a list of tasks that will be provided to their district employees or will be working for us for the entire day, the entire 29 and a half hours.
Right, but aren't they going to have to have time off during the day? In order for this to be, because they're going to have to run buses in the morning, buses in the afternoon. That's what I'm trying to figure out. They can't work an eight-hour day, so they have to be off at least two hours or something during the day. Is that the plan?
The plan is for them to work a full 70 hours per day. 5.9 hours per day to total 29 and a half hours. So 5.9 hours will be a combination of drive time, and if they're depending on the route again that they're driving, if there's any downtime, they'll utilize the different tasks in the district.
I still can't figure out how it's going to work. Because right, we have our parents at four hours, or the aides on the buses are going to be four hours. So if we figure drive time is four hours of the day, the six and a half, that's two and a half hours. That starts at the beginning of the day and the end of the day. There has to be time off in the middle of the day.
And there will also be schedules that will be rotating. So some drivers might be in the morning earlier, some drivers might be finishing the day later.
I think the route doesn't take four hours.
There's two routes.
Right.
Do two routes, finish the routes in the mornings, routes in the afternoon. Yeah, as I said before, I need more detailed information before I can vote on that.
So we're just going to same. Which one?
Seven.
I just wrote down. Yeah, same or both. Okay. Let's see, would be appropriate. You don't have enough information, right? Okay, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Chacon?
Yes.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes, with the exceptions of seven and eight. I'm staying.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, recommend the motion to approve superintendent of schools' non-personnel items A through K. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Non-personnel A through K. Is that discussion?
Mr. Chacon?
Yes.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Underneath this, I recommend a motion to approve the following recommendations from the superintendent of schools. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. The resolution is, "Result of Board of Education approved the appointment of Bush Law Firm as Board Attorney effective on December 9th through December 31st, 2026." Are there any questions? I wanted to make that statement. Okay, may I roll call please?
Mr. Chacon?
Yes.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
I will abstain.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, recommend the motion to approve the following recommendations from the superintendent of schools. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay. "Result of Board of Education approved the following resolution. Whereas it has been determined that employee number 6334 has engaged in inappropriate conduct, whereas it has been determined that employee 6334's inappropriate conduct provides sufficient basis to withhold their employment and adjustment increment pursuant to NJSA 18A 29-14. It here would resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that employee 6334's employment and adjustment increment for the 26-27 school year shall be withheld. And it is further resolved that the superintendent will provide employee number 6334 with written notice of this action within ten days pursuant to NJSA 18A 29-14." May I have a roll call please?
Mr. Chacon?
Yes.
Mr. Filicello?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Erber?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we're going to move on to public comment. I do have a statement to read to the public, just in anticipation of people speaking. "We understand that over the past several days, some members of our community may have received communications or seen commentary on social media regarding a specific situation within a classroom environment. We want to assure our parents and the school community that the safety, well-being, and educational success of all students and staff are our highest priorities. Please be advised that pursuant to federal and state student privacy laws, including the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, the district is legally prohibited from sharing any personally identifiable information, specific student details, or specifics of interventions or disciplinary actions in a public forum. Please be assured that both building-based and district administration is actively engaged in addressing this matter in accordance with all applicable legal, regulatory, and district policy. We strongly caution all community members to refrain from speculating about the facts, identifying names of students or staff, especially minors, or making assumptions based on incomplete or unverified information. Thank you for your cooperation." Okay. Public comment has begun.
You have three minutes, Margaret.
Yeah. I'll read the brief statement again. "The Board shall, the floor is open to members of the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment. The Board requests that each statement made by a participant is three minutes, no longer than three minutes, according to Policy 0167, which is assigned and cheated to voting." Thank you.
Tiffany Middlecooke, A.D. McCarty Way. I am speaking tonight as a resident and a parent who is deeply concerned about student and staff safety, instructional access, and the district's legal obligations. There is an ongoing situation in a general ed classroom involving severe aggressive behaviors, throwing chairs, shoving desks, physical and verbal aggression towards students and staff. These incidents have resulted in repeated full-class evacuations. This is not an isolated event. My own daughter, who I have since pulled and homeschooled, experienced similar disruptions last year in a different classroom with a different student. The reputation across the school in years demonstrates a system-level failure and behavioral crisis response. Let me share some legal implications. So NJAC 6A 16-5.1, each district board of ed shall develop implement policies and procedures of protecting the health and safety of students. Repeated evacuations clearly violates the standard. NJAC 6A 14-3.8, a re-evaluation shall be conducted when the district determines the educational or related services needs of the student warrants for eval. Daily evacuations needs to be scheduled. Section 504, districts must provide equal access to education for every student. Students repeatedly losing instructional time due to safety evacuations do not have equal access. Timely action is required. So the IEP 504 should have occurred within 10 school days. A functional behavioral assessment within 20 school days. Immediate implementation of an updated BIP, Behavior Intervention Plan, should have occurred. Cross-training, crisis training, and behavioral support should have been deployed without delay. A building-level safety plan that does not rely on evacuating an entire class should have been put in place. Parents need more transparency. A public release of monthly behavior or safety data. I like data. A public presentation explaining crisis response procedures, staffing, and compliance efforts. Clear communication protocols for staff and families regarding repeated safety disruptions. And I just want to add something on a personal level. I am a mother of children with autism and children with serious mental health challenges. I have sat in emergency rooms, psychiatric facilities, and countless meetings. I have participated in IOPs and OHH programs with my own children. I know exactly what it looks like when a child is overwhelmed, dysregulated, and mentally unwell. I recognize the signs of a child who needs intensive support, not punishment, not blame. So when I say that I'm concerned for the welfare of the student who is struggling, I mean it. A child who is exhibiting extreme behaviors is a child who needs more support, not less. They need a placement and a plan that is clinically appropriate, emotionally supportive, and legally compliant. They need adults who step in early and with skill, not a system that waits until the situation escalates into a crisis almost every single day. It's certainly about the safety of the entire class, but it's also very much about the safety, dignity, and mental health of the child or children in crisis, because this just keeps happening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Just to the silent and state your name. Thank you.
So I didn't write any, my name is. Oh, it's hot.
This one may work better.
I'm sorry. Clearly, I have not gone through. I'll be right here.
So my name is Linda DeBeau. My daughter is Abigail Zookel. She is in a flexing school. And I didn't write anything. I'm not that great of a speaker. I'm gonna do the best I can in under three minutes. My daughter has experienced the trauma and abuse and been assaulted multiple times. And I have normalized this. Every single day, she comes home with a story of cuss words, of being attacked, hit in her neck, hit in her head, punched. And the worst part about this is, as a parent, I've gotten to the point, every single morning I ask her, after the day, I should say in the afternoon, did it hurt? Was it a fist? Was it a slap? Did you cry? Were you sent to the nurse? Did you tell the teacher? Because there's only so many times I can keep calling the school. I know everybody around here. I don't wanna be that mom. I have an expectation to keep my daughter safe. And the worst part about this is, as I already said, when she came home and she just said, I don't think anybody cares that I've become his punching bag. I'm a punching cushion to him. They don't have altercations. He just walks by, says he's heading to the bathroom and clubs her in the back of the head. How, when I tell you she's a sweet little tiny thing, and somebody wants to tell me it doesn't qualify as bullying? Well, it does qualify as bullying. She is tiny. She's this tiny little sweet thing. Because she's short, her middle name is Josephine, he calls her a boy repeatedly. He tells her that she's short, okay, so that might broaden her. I can live with that. But the fact that I can't live with is that she's being hit on a normal basis, and I have normalized this every single day. This should not be happening at all. I have a tutor for her, that she gets tutored down because she was, she's not getting the education that she needs because of in the classroom. So I was at one time a week, now we're doing it an hour and a half twice a week, because she is not getting the education that she deserves. He has more rights than her. That's not fair if anything said. How would you feel as a parent if this was your child? Being coming home every day? Do you know what the parent, other parent said to me? And absolutely. I said, those words that he's saying to her, and she said, they're just words, don't they pull up and goodbye? They're not just words. And my daughter said them in church. That's, they have an impact. She said, you're a little, she shouldn't be dealing with this and knowing this. Then I felt out of hip and hoard. I was told, I'm not gonna have the results until January. I'm sorry, but I read online, it should be in ten days. Where is her rights at this point? I have a high expectation. I don't wanna be here. I don't wanna be here. I don't wanna take further steps. I've had the police call me today. I had a lawyer reach out from Notre Dame calling me today. Over my Facebook post, I don't wanna be here. I promise you this, I won't go. I just am here to protect her, and I'm expecting everybody to be on the same page. I don't think anybody wants to see her get hit. I truly believe that. But when did it become his rights are more important than hers? And every kid in our class who's been in choke, who the teachers have mugged around her, that's knocked over. I am asking everybody to please help me, so that I don't have to go any further. Because I like everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to close public session?
Motion.
Second.
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 Thank you. Okay, it's time for the board forum. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. Thank you to Tiffany and Linda for coming to speak to the podium tonight. As a board, student safety is our number one priority. In a public school system, fortunately or unfortunately, there are laws and guidelines and statutes that we have to work within. And so with that understanding, we work with the administration as a board to make sure that everything is taken serious and everything that we become aware of is dealt with as fast as humanly possible within the confines of the law. And we need your help as the public when there's things going on in the school district that aren't being addressed. I think it's fair to say that if you brought up something to one of our attentions, we would immediately turn it over to the administration and try to follow up the best we can until there's an actual result where everybody in this district has the education that they deserve. So with that being said, you know, we wanna make sure that everybody knows we are all responsible for the education of the kids that come through these buildings. Parent, staff, board member, administration, all of us need to work together because we all have the same goal of a safe, clean environment where our students can get the best education possible. This is our community. I grew up here. I went to this school district. I was in this building forty years ago. So I wanna make sure that this is the best place possible for our kids to get the best education possible. And I just wanna thank you, the parents, the people that spoke up, the people that wrote us emails, the people that stop us on the streets telling us, you know, things that are going on. Thank you for working together with us, and thank you for your patience as we push as hard as we can within the confines of the law to make sure that actual tangible results occur for everybody, so that the kids can get the best education possible. On a different note, I do wanna congratulate Tiffany and Christine and myself for election to the board. Tiffany, you've always been an outspoken critic, so now you get to come inside the tent and see how the sausage is made. You're gonna be a very valuable member of the board. You ask great questions, you do your research, you're very educated on the issues at hand, so congratulations, and we look forward to working with you on the board. And then finally, tomorrow night, the Little Lake Harbor Special Education Parent Advisory Group is hosting a really fun activity tomorrow night, six to eight P.M. I know it's a parent-teacher conferences, but from six to eight P.M. at George Mitchell School, they are partnering with the Pine Lands Basketball Association. More specifically, the head coach, varsity basketball coach of Pine Lands is inviting some of his star players to come play with kids in our district of all abilities, all levels. It is sponsored by the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, but all kids pre-K through six are invited to come and play basketball for two hours with the varsity basketball players. It's really cute to see these really big, tall basketball players playing with these little kids and lift them up so they can dunk. It's a free event, so if you can make it out, please do, which will be six to eight P.M. tomorrow at George Mitchell. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. John, would you like to say a few words?
I mean, Chris pretty much covered everything there very well. So, I mean, the one thing that I have to say is, you know, I wish everybody, you know, Happy Thanksgiving, and I think it's great that families that are in need during the holidays, you know, try to be there for certain families, if you could help them with food and things like that. I think that's really needed, especially with a tightness community like we have. You know, there's kids out there that are very hungry, and, you know, it's good to bring that food to them and bring them to your home and comfort families out there that are in need. And pretty much that's it with everything else. Congratulations, Tiffany. Look forward to seeing you and getting to know you on the board. Christine, congrats again on your win. And that's pretty much it. Have everybody have a safe Thanksgiving, be safe, and bring families in and try to do what you can.
Thank you, John.
Great.
Good.
First of all, it's always fun to watch the kids come up and get their awards every time. They, just to see them stand here and watch their little faces and just to see the pride in their faces and that they're being recognized and to hear all the lovely things that their teachers have to say about them. That's just highlighted my time when we have to do these meetings. Additionally, being the phys ed teacher, I would be remiss not to congratulate my phys ex peeps over here. Every year, you guys blowing out of the sky with that fundraiser. I think even my kids, who I'm not gonna say how old they are now because that'll give me up, because I know I look good. But the amount of money you bring in and just the education that goes with that for the children, and also knowing, because I do a lot of fundraising over where I'm at, and every year it gets harder and harder. And when you can get kids to buy into something that is something that they look forward to every year, that's just an amazing feat. And I feel, we're talking about Thanksgiving, I'm thankful that we have teachers that are dedicated to promoting that program year in and year out. So kudos to you guys, congratulations. And to the rest of you and everybody who's watching, Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Allison.
I'll just piggyback off of what Allison said. I think the Students of the Month is probably what I'm going to miss most when I am not serving on the school board. It's probably brings me the most joy. And I know this is my second-to-last meeting. Congratulations, Tiffany, for taking this seat. I decided not to run again, and next month will be my last meeting, serving the Little Lake Harbor School District, so I'll talk about that then and try not to get emotional. But I also wanna just thank Linda and Tiffany for having the courage to come up here and say what you said. I can assure you that this board's number one priority is the safety of every single child that comes into this district, because if our children do not feel safe, they cannot learn. And that is our number one priority and objective. So I can assure you that this board is questioning and doing everything we possibly can, as Chris said, within the law, to make sure that our students are safe. So thank you for your courage. Board elections, I talked about, congratulations. Teacher conferences are this week, so please go meet with your kids' teachers, those of you who are listening on YouTube. And thank you, teachers, for all that you do to support your students and meet with all of the parents that you need to squeeze in in three days. So thank you for that. Jump rope for heart, as Allison said, congratulations to our P.E. staff. I remember doing that when I went to Frog Pond, so it's been around a very long time. Kudos, my kids love it, keep it up every year. I mean, it's such a staple here in this district. So I look forward to hearing years to come of being number nine in the state and number three in the county. I mean, that's really something to be proud about. So kudos. And then lastly, I'm just very thankful for everything that I've learned over the last three years and working with all of you and serving this school district. So this Thanksgiving, I'm thankful for my family and my health and my family's health, but I'm very thankful for the last three years of serving the Little Lake Harbor School District. So Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Abby.
Okay, I'm gonna just tie off of John first with regards to food. I'm a college professor by day, and so food insecurity is a really big thing in my book, and it's something I hate to see because college students really suffer from it. So this Sunday, November twenty-third, at the Little Lake Harbor Senior Center, they're between two and five, they're offering a free meal. I don't know if you knew about that. And they also provide transportation, no questions asked, just come, and maybe some, if any senior citizens are listening, maybe you just like some company. So please take advantage of that. I think it's a great service that our time is, I think it's actually just believing is offered it. And with regards to the parents that have emailed us and spoke this evening, I wanna thank you, same with Abby with having the courage, but I also wanna commend you on the amount of respect that I felt and feeling that you had in your letters. Because it, none of those letters were self-centered. Everyone thought about all the parties involved when you were writing those. And it was with such heart and emotion. And I think, Ms. DeBeau, you're, when you said "normalizing," that was the trigger word that touched for me, and that is something I would hate to see any child believe that it's okay. And so maybe us, maybe the district can think about, you know, some type of counseling or groups for the kids involved in this situation to help them through it and realize it's not okay, it's not acceptable, and so that they're not affected. I mean, they will be affected from this, but moving forward can have a way to deal with it, and maybe that's something that the district can work on in the school to help those students. And for Jump Rope for Heart, I hope you guys are still doing the wonderful incentives where you get to slime the gym P.E. teachers and silly string. I know that was a favorite of my kids. And it's wonderful. And, you know, promoting heart health gallon is a very, very, very good thing to do. And Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope everyone has a chance to be with their families and remember what they're thankful for. And all of the teachers, I hope you have a relaxing break. There's not too many more days until we get a little bit of break before the winter break. And have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I also wanna congratulate the award winners for the Board of Respect this month, and also American Heart Association. I know, Abby, you mentioned Frog Pond, but I think I heard and I wrote the name, I read the email, George David Mitchell, second in New Jersey. Is that right? Second in New Jersey and sixth in Ocean County, sixth in Ocean County. So that's a big feat. I just, our little school really did a lot, and I'm so proud of them. And we wish Miss English some good health in the future. And to the parents tonight, I do wanna say you exemplified that respect when you spoke at the podium, and I so appreciate that. And you respected the dignity and the privacy of students, and I think you should be commended for that. And I also admire your knowledge of the statutes, the procedures, even where it is concerned. So I would encourage you to talk with our administrators, Dr. Antunes, the proper administrators, to address these concerns, and I assure you, things are being put in place to address the situation. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out, and Happy Thanksgiving. Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eight twenty-four, and our next meeting is December ninth.